Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commission Budget Public Hearing Meeting, September 15, 2022, beginning at 6:02 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to allow the public to comment to the Board of County Commissioners proposed budget and millage rate for fiscal year 23. Before I begin into the meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Tonight, the purpose of the meeting is of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on the millage rates and the budget prior to the Board approving two resolutions setting the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023. The millage rates and the budget will be adopted on Thursday, September 22, after the final budget public hearing. In a moment, our budget director will read into the record the increase in the aggregate fiscal year 23 tentative millage rate from the rollback rate. We'll also receive a brief discussion regarding the status of the tentative budget, after which we will take public comment. At the conclusion of the comment period tonight, the Board will discuss any potential changes to the budget. And with that, I will offer an opportunity and introduce our budget director, Kevin Bricki.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Bricki, and I am the budget director.
It's nice to see you in person, sir.
Yes, it is.
You've been in Hollywood Squares for, what, two years now, three and a half years?
That's right.
So welcome to the boardroom.
At least, yes. Thank you so much. The calculated change in the tentative aggregate millage represents a 9.98% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects, in part, normal as well as recently heightened inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation, affordable housing, statutory and contractual commitments, union contracts, technology upgrades, constitutional officers, and certain other county needs. With that, I will be providing also a brief overview of the budget. HTV will have my presentation. Commissioners, the tentative budget the Board will vote on tonight reflects the county administrator's recommended budget for fiscal year 23, as amended by updates and corrections that have been made since the recommended budget was delivered on July 20. The FY23 budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating, and the tentative budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with your strategic focus. Next slide, please. The total budget, tentative budget, has increased $1.013 billion from FY22 to '23, a 13.5% increase. The FY23 capital budget accounts for $798 million of that increase, so the large portion of it. New bond issuances for water wastewater projects of $492 million, solid waste facility projects, $63 million, ELAP acquisition dollars, $32 million, account for a large portion of that capital budget increase. ARP projects that were approved after the adopted budget for FY22 account for another $134 million of that amount. Next slide, please. The FY23 budget includes a number of additions that reflect Board priorities in public safety, emergency preparedness, ELAP, and also the value that we place on our employees. There is a new Sun City North Fire Station, and staffing are included, an upgrade of two rescue squads to rescue units for fire rescue, a new emergency and fire warehouse, which is important and has been important in our emergency response in the past few years, giving us more capacity. Parks and conservation site renovations are included, additional funding for ELAP land acquisition, which I previously mentioned. And reflecting the importance of our employees, employee compensation and benefit enhancements are included. Next slide, please. Since the recommended budget, there have been a few changes. There's been the addition of the $16.2 million of flag items approved at the budget reconciliation meeting, and subsequently also at the August 17 Board Meeting. There was one change since then. Commissioner Myers has deleted the sulfur springs after school program for $75,000 and replaced that with $50,000 for children with a vision, and $25,000 additional for the Tampa Bay Black Heritage Festival. In another area on, at the budget reconciliation, the Board also directed staff to identify potential funding sources for other projects, the King Forest Recreation Center splash pad and the Progress Village Park improvements. That's about $850,000 for the splash pad and about $2.3 million for the Progress Village Park improvements. We have looked at that and identified that ARP funding would be appropriate for those items, and after the new fiscal year, we'll be bringing a agenda item, an ARP agenda item in October, to accomplish that. We had revised property appraiser valuations that took effect since the recommended budget. Those are the July 1 property appraiser valuations. We had some revised revenue estimates and updated estimates of carryforward balances, which largely often had to do with capital budgets that, and items that were budgeted in FY22, and there was difficulty in receiving those, and so we've carried some of those forward. There was also about $197 million reduction due to the fact that we returned the previous transportation surtax revenues to the state. Next, please. So this budget calendar slide, you've seen this before, it's getting short and shorter. Today, of course, September 15, you're adopting the tentative budget and then the tentative millages. Actually, it'll be first the tentative millages and then the tentative budget. And on September 22, you'll adopt the final millages and budget, a week from tonight. And also a week from tonight, there is a second public hearing for the capital improvement program, which you'll be adopting also on the evening of September 22, next Thursday. With that, Madam Chair, I would recommend you accept public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bricki, for your presentation. That was excellent. And with that, we'll open up the opportunity for those individuals that'd like to speak to the Board regarding the issues associated this evening with the budget. I have several individuals that have signed up to speak, and each of you will have an opportunity to speak for a total of three minutes. I will call you by name, and you're more than welcome to approach the podium. And on the podium, you'll see a little light timer thing. When it's green, you go; when it's yellow, you're getting close; and when it's red, you're to stop. And with that, I'll ask and recognize Rochelle Gross. You're here in person. Is Rochelle here? Is there Rochelle online, communications?
Rochelle did not log in virtually.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next person signed up to speak for this evening is Gerald White. Good evening, Mr. White. It's good to see you again.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this evening. Gerald White, Hillsborough County community activist. I support the budget, I support the millage rate, definitely for funding for the African American Museum, looking forward to that. But the reason I'm here tonight is to express a concern that I have related to the citizens of Hillsborough County losing their homeowner's insurance because of the changes. A lot of the companies have just fallen out, and as a result, in order to get new insurance, they have to get a new roof. And roofs are very expensive for citizens that, residents of Hillsborough County that are homesteading here. I don't see it. I looked through the 480 pages. I would like the Board of County Commissioners to consider a program in the budget. You don't have to do it tonight, but think about it and consider it, a home roof relief program in some way, either by way of a reduction in the property tax or by way of a grant to homeowners that are homesteaded in Hillsborough County. I am deeply concerned about the citizens that have reached the middle class, fallen into poverty because of losing a home, can't afford a new roof, losing a job, you just name it. It's very tight in the community. Citizens are becoming stressed. The county has performed well on behalf of the citizens, but I believe this issue tilts the scale. And I'm asking for the Board of County Commissioners for some help in this respect. That's my deep concern. I won't be able to make the next budget meeting, but I got up at, phew, 5:00 this morning for work, very tired, long day. But I wanted to express my concern and request the Board, as a whole, Democrat, Republican, to consider this and give the citizens some sort of sense of security that the county have their back, have the citizens back in this respect. And I think it'll go a long way in creating stability for the citizens of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. We all know that everybody's struggling with insurance costs these days. The third person signed up to speak is Serena Serrano. Ms. Serrano, you're recognized.
Hi, there. Thank you. Good evening. My husband and I moved to Hillsborough County a little over a year ago. We're homeowners in the city of Tampa. The home that we bought was one of thousands that are selling like hotcakes in the past year and a half, two years in our county. It saw a huge increase just like in price, just like the average home price in Hillsborough County has increased by 24%, right? The previous owners in 2020 paid $1,800 in taxes, in property taxes, for a home that was valued at $128,000. A year later, we were, we had to pay $6,200 for the same house that was valued then at $306,000. What changed with the house? Let's see. It was still a house that was over 70 years old, pockmarked with termite damage, plenty of utility lines tangled and sagging, connected to the old telephone poles above ground in a neighborhood that still is full of potholes and has sidewalks in less than half of its What changed is the huge amount of value increase in our county. So what I would like to know is, since we are one of thousands of homeowners that are paying double or triple or quadruple amount in property tax, how is it possible that the county needs more revenue to increase our property taxes when you've gained millions in revenue in the past year or two with these price home value increases? I really would like that to be justified very clearly, because I can't find online anywhere your amount of revenue. It's not transparent, the revenue that you got in 2020 versus the revenue from 2021. At least, it wasn't easy to find. So I would like to have that justified very clearly, why struggling taxpayers, homeowners, need to have their property taxed increase by nearly 10%. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker that signed up to speak is David Kohat. I'm sorry if I messed that up, sir.
You set it correctly, so. My name's Dave Kohat. Thank you for having us here today, and good evening. I wanted to talk a couple things about, first of all, increasing the tax rate. You know, as we've mentioned before, there's a lot of people still struggling with COVID and high inflation, and so people really can't afford that increase. And to discuss kind of on top of what the young lady just said, as far as the sale of properties, I've talked with many neighbors, and we're kind of confused as to why taxes are increasing on our property values when the sales of properties have increased, which would include an increased amount of taxes. And then not only we see every day houses that are like mine, mines from the 50s, being torn down, and then two mega mansions are being built. So you're going from collecting a house that had maybe $6,000 in taxes to something that's over $24,000. So again, I think some transparency as far as the budget is concerned, as far as what revenue is collected, would be important to get to the citizens of Tampa. And then also, you know, looking at that and not increasing taxes, these property taxes on those individuals that own those homes. We're starting to get taxed out where even myself is thinking about, well, maybe I need to move somewhere else because I can't afford to live here anymore. So that's all I had to say. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The next person, do you want to speak before we finish public comment? Okay. I recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to state for the record, and I'll ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to state for the record that there is no proposal to increase the tax rate. If your property value increases, then your taxes will increase. But Ms. Wise, what I'd like to ask you to do, certainly the previous two speakers, and if any of the upcoming speakers talk to the same issue, I'd like for you and your staff to get them in touch with an appropriate representative from the property appraisers' office to explain, you know, the process of what happens when a home changes hands due to a sale, and what happens as property values increase and things like that.
Thank you. We are happy to do so, and I was thinking that as well. I appreciate you saying that, and also to confirm that you are correct, we are not changing the tax rate.
Yeah.
And so we did want to make it clear. I do understand that people's taxes do increase, however, with the value change.
But I hear you. For those that have spoken, and if any of the upcoming speakers are going to speak to the same issue, I empathize with you, and we'll have a staff member available for you to get connected with someone to talk further about the issue.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner White. That's, I'm sure that'll be very helpful.
I.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Kemp?
Also, actually, I mean, I went and just Googled the Hillsborough County budget, like I will, and you can actually find a lot of information online when you do that. But I understand why it would be difficult for a citizen who isn't embedded to really understand what is exactly going on, because it's complex. But I would like to say, too, do we have a, there was an excellent presentation here for our Board about a month ago that was done, and I had asked at the time that it be posted with the audio that we did. You know, I mean, I was just looking, it seems like it could be on the top of this fiscal '23 budget page, like someplace that people, I just thought it was just such a strong presentation about how this works and what our expenditures are.
Age. Pardon me?
Oh.
The video is on the FY23 budget page.
Okay. Because I'm on my phone here. I just real fast looked it up, and it's probably here, but I didn't, it isn't immediately apparent to me in like, you know, 30 seconds. So that's all I'm asking. The other thing I think it's really important for, and I appreciate the, Commissioner White, I think that is important for us to do that. But I also would like the, you know, citizens to understand residents that a lot of this is state law. It's the Save Our Homes that has changed and really dramatically impacts, particularly with the first speaker who bought a home just a year ago. They don't have what Save Our Homes does, which is cap increases at 3% a year. It doesn't matter if your house value goes up 500%, 3% a year, and that affects, right now, 68% of the homes in Hillsborough County that are homesteaded, 68% actually of the properties that are homesteaded and are capped at 3%. And I can tell you for my own self, I looked at my property bill, because I was just very curious. I'll just share that it went from last year $3,950 to $4,018. My property tax went up $68. And, you know, I think that it was, that's not uncommon for what people are seeing with these increases. So it is, it is a mechanism of the, not if you bought a new home. When you buy a new home till it kicks in, it's difficult. But the, it is a reflection of Save Our Homes, which I think is not in many ways. Doesn't, it's the capping and the way that it's done is, it really impacts new people moving to our state and what they're paying, and it is, it's what the state legislature has done.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. We have three more public speakers that have joined us this evening. I'm going to recognize County Administrator Bonnie Wise, and then I'd like to move back to the public comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to let people know that staff will spend whatever time we need to with the people who are here tonight. We'll direct them to the property appraisers' office, and any questions they have on the budget, we're happy to discuss that with them as well.
Thank you very much. Commissioner White?
I'll make this very brief, Madam Chair. Also, when staff meets with these citizens, you also might want to go over the fact that some other taxing authorities impact the tax bill, most notably the school board. I think that's the other big chunk.
Now, I'd like to recognize Mr. James Hill. Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Welcome.
You're on.
I'm on. All right. Good evening, everyone. I am here representing a community of older homes, a high percentage of retirees, alongside a large number of early in career and very young families. Cannot go down any street without seeing, as David mentioned earlier, developers tearing down these older homes and building million-dollar monstrosities in their place, tripling, quadrupling the taxable value on each one. Home sales of existing homes that are not under construction are, have had a record year over the last year, and the Save Our Homes cap is essentially immediately assessed to the new homeowners of every one of those new homes, meaning substantial additional revenue to the county. And then lastly, property appraiser valuations are out of control. My house, 1950s house, increased my 90% last year. My neighbors, 39%. All of this essentially resulting in record tax revenue, making another 10% increase, simply irresponsible and unsustainable for our communities. They're simply forcing people out of their houses. And furthermore, just last month, the people have already spoken. Just last month, they said no to a millage increase for schools for a very good reason, for a very good cause for our teachers. Our community has said no in a referendum to increase taxes even further than what's already going on. So today, I'm here representing my community to say no to these additional budget increases and this 10% additional increase, above and beyond the three things that I've already mentioned. So I'll leave everyone with a couple of stats, everybody that's here today in the audience and online, but I'll leave everybody with a couple of stats. If this continues, if this is approved and this continues, homesteaders to the 3% increase every year, along with this 10%, their taxes will double in 5.4 years. It's a compounded interest rate of 13.1%. Non-homesteaders will double in 3.4%.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamie Binning. I'm sorry if I messed that up, too. Is that okay?
No, you're fine. That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate your time. I'll preface this by saying I don't really know what I'm talking about. I'm a first-time homeowner, and I'm just here to try to make sense of some things. So I have this paper that we got in the mail that talks about the property taxes and whatnot. And I guess maybe I'll direct this at Commissioner White, who just mentioned the school millage rate. So from my, I guess, from what I understand, the millage rate was 5.73 in 2021. I'm assuming this is that rollback rate that you guys are talking about, that it dropped down to 5.15330 if no budget change is made. But if the budget change is made, the millage rate comes back up to 5.73090. So I guess I'm just not sure why, because for me personally, with no budget change, my property taxes go up $1,000. But with the proposed budget, it goes up 1,500. And regarding the schools, under the public schools, schools state, schools local, they did not bring their millage rate back up to 2021. They did roll theirs back a little bit, but they did not bring it back up to the millage rate that was in 2021, whereas it looks like Hillsborough County is the only one that did that, brought it back up to that 2021 millage rate entirely. Doesn't seem to account for inflation or anything else that, you know, people are struggling with. So I'm just trying to make sense of this and, you know, where all this extra money is going to go to. I know that he mentioned some things, but I've also heard, you know, about the potholes and, you know, roads and that sort of thing, but I didn't see any of that necessarily in his presentation unless that's classified under transportation. But again, you know, I may just be naive and I don't know enough, but I would just ask that maybe you reconsider bringing it back up to the 2021 rate when it looks like even the schools didn't do that.
You recognize Commissioner White?
Thank you. We're going to get a staff member to explain all that to you, but we're not bringing the rate back up. The rate is staying level. The millage rate is the number of dollars that you pay per $1,000 of value of your home. That's staying level, but you're seeing your taxes increase because of your increase in property value.
I guess this isn't explained, yeah. And I did call the property tax, I called the property appraisers' website, or the office, and I asked them about this, and they didn't have any answers for me. They directed me to come to this meeting. That's why I'm here.
Yeah, we're going to get you some one-on-one answers, and we'll get staff to explain what that rollback rate means for you.
All right. I appreciate that. But I would also suggest maybe taking these comments into consideration.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Yeah, the rollback rate is confusing. I just, it's just hard to navigate a little bit, so very good. Thank you. Our last speaker that signed up to speak is Todd Seifrak. I'm not going to get it right, sir. I'm sorry. Will you help me figure out how to say that, please?
Todd Seifrak. So a nice Irish name, I guess.
Thank you very much. I was going to totally make it worse, so thank you very much.
Yeah, don't, I appreciate the time. I don't have any prepared remarks. I'm just here to kind of speak from my heart, I guess, and from my pocketbook. So I'm the owner of a small business here in the county. We have 40 employees, and I'm here to tell you that there's a big struggle going on out there. And a lot of my employees have adjustable rate mortgages. rate mortgages. We handle and take care of about 6,000 patients throughout the area. They don't have money to pay their co-pays. It's a, it's a, it's a crisis that's going on outside of these walls. And I think any budget increase, any line item budget, any line item on the budget that you're increasing is just completely out of touch with the reality that's going on out there. And I'm not sure whether you all feel it, but I know I do. And I see it every single day. That's really all I wanted to say. So I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, sir, for coming and sharing with us. That was the last speaker. Unless, is Rochelle Gross? Ma'am, we called on you first, but you're more than welcome to come up. Come on up. I saw you come in. I was like, I bet you that's Rochelle. So you have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Rochelle Gross. I have a few small commercial buildings. And last year, the property taxes went up 10%. This year, they may go up 10% again. Our insurance is crazy. It goes up over 1,000 every year. And at some point, you need to pass it on to your tenants. I have small business tenants. Like, they complain if I up the water $5 just to cover charges. So I really think, like the last guy, you've got to take the small business person into consideration also. They can't afford the increases that I'm seeing when you add insurance and property taxes on. So I'm eating them. But then at the same time, because of building supply or whatever, all of the materials for maintenance have gone up, the contractors' prices have gone up, everything's gone up. And at some point, people have to give. I get calls, multiple calls every day to sell the property to people with deep pockets. So what happens if you sell your property? Then they raise all the tax, they raise all the rents, and everybody gets kicked out, which is basically our problem right now across the city. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to us. That's the last speaker that has signed up to speak for this evening. And so I will close the public, the section of public comment and open it up for board discussion. Commissioner White? I didn't ever take you out of the queue, so I think I'll start again. My apologies.
No, I just re-entered the queue. So I just want to make a comment for the record. I'm not asking that the budget under consideration be changed in any way. But I have been contacted sort of last minute by the Bealsville community. They're looking for some additional funding for the historic Glover School. It's my understanding that they have recently received some federal and state funding towards that. So I think that positions them nicely to compete for a historic challenge grant. It's my understanding that that federal and state funding can be used for the match portion under that program. So I'm just going to ask staff to reach out to probably David from my office. I think he's been the one that's been in contact with their leadership in the Bealsville community. And my request is just that we help guide them through the historic challenge grant process and see if we can get them well positioned to compete for one of those. I've gotten them some funding in the past through the flagging process, but it's my understanding that they've never received any historic challenge grant monies. So this could be a golden opportunity for the Bealsville community.
That sounds like a great idea. So that's the only person I have in the queue. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay. I do just say that we are, like everybody else, experiencing significant increases in costs in the way we do business. And I do know that every board member here has had some great concerns about the cost of the expenses that we have and the things that we need to do and the impact it has on the community. I see it every day working in the area of affordable housing and how challenging it is to have so many people that are at risk of not doing well. I wish we had a greater say when it comes to the insurance rates that are charged here in Hillsborough County. But that is a state issue, and our state legislators, I believe, will need to actually address how insurance companies require things and the kinds of actions that insurance companies require. We do have what's called ship funds for low to moderate income, for individuals whose homes are in need of renovation that would possibly include a roof. So there are some resources for our low-income individuals that would be at risk of having to sell their home because they can no longer, they can't get a roof done. But that's, that is, we recognize that all of our communities are struggling. And we also have to provide services. As you saw in the budget presentation, the things that we're doing is fire safety and many other things that our residents require. So with that, I will say that I don't have any other budget, any board comment. So we can move on to the next section of the agenda, which is addressing the actions associated with the millage rate. Before adopting the millage rate and budget resolutions, we must publicly announce the following. The name of the taxing authority is Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.0738 mils. The proposed aggregate tentative millage rate is 8.8793 mils, represents a 9.98% increase from the rollback, aggregate rollback rate. The tentative millage rates are to be levied are: the countywide general revenue at 5.739 mils, the unincorporated area municipal.
Sorry, can you read that one again, please?
Sure. The tentative millage rates are to be levied are: countywide general revenue, 5.7309 mils. Okay. Did I have a dyslexic moment there? Oh, sorry. All right. I'll do that once more time. The countywide general revenue, 5.7309 mils. Unincorporated area municipal services taxi unit at 4.3745 mils. The library services at 0.5583 mils. The voter obligated general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands is 0.0604 mils. The voter general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation is 0.0259 mils. At this point, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by the staff.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. A second by Commissioner Smith. I don't see any other discussion. Please take a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now that the tentative millage resolution has been adopted, it's appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by the staff.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, as second by Commissioner Myers. Not seeing any further discussion, please do a roll call vote.
Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This concludes tonight's budget public hearing. The date and time and place for the final public hearing will be at 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 22, in the County Commission Boardroom on the second floor of the county center at 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida 33603. Everyone, have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Me and your chair.